Seven oh eight. Any adjustments to the agenda other than suggesting we move four point oh to later in the meeting? I think anyone else has any, right? Alright, so we'll jump right into reports to the board. Five point one.
That's locked, so I guess I'll leave that open. So you have the principal's report in your packet. Copy's here.
I read it, but I'll take your copy.
So.
My copy is.
So there's a few things that I'd like to highlight.
Yep.
Lyda Winfield, she did convocation for CSSU two years ago. And it was absolutely incredible, incredible, powerful. Walked away saying, I, we need to figure out a way to get her in, in front of the kids. And the impact that she had in the two days that she spent with us was incredible. So again, really powerful. The, the way that she works with kids is inspiring and, but as we continue to, to work on the curriculum that talks about empathy and differences and the struggles that some people are going through, she, she was everything and more. So looking to continue to work with her in, in the coming years. So that was great. Sback and science kneecap, almost done. Fifth grade is doing Sback this week. And then, once that's done, then we're, we're in the clear. Kneecaps. The kids are working hard. I took a look at the kneecaps. Really challenging tests, so I'm gonna be interested.
This is the science one, right?
The science, yeah.
And again, that's fourth and eighth?
Yep. Yep, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
So our understanding as board members has been that our supervisory union has been well-prepared with technology because of all the integration that we've had and having, people having the right devices. Is that playing out? Can we, could we say to community members, you know, our kids were well-prepared to access whatever they needed to access?
What we were worried last year with Sback being technology-driven or on a device, that was the only way you could take the Sback, was that we didn't want technology to get in the way of showing what students.
Right.
Understood and knew. And I think I can say with a hundred percent that, that it didn't get in the way.
Yeah.
Of that. So not only having access and having it be readily accessible, but students being comfortable enough with it so that it didn't intrude on showing what they knew and understood.
Kudos to all of Central Office and your team.
And it's not a, it's not an easy.
Because that's not typical for everybody in the state.
Yeah. I think, and Mike could speak to this, but I think Heinsberg's been on the, the front end of getting, making sure that people have devices.
Yeah, Heinsberg's kind of on the head of making sure technology's in the kids' hands, you know?
Oh, that's great.
Yep.
Thanks.
So new hires. I guess, last meeting, we went into executive session and talked about the new hires, but publicly, we couldn't be happier with the people that are coming in. A hundred and thirty-three applicants, I believe, for the, the K-four positions. And, and the three people that we got are just absolutely incredible. So really looking forward to starting the year with them. Evan Sevo is a new special ed educator. And got a chance to meet with him last week. And, and he's, he's gonna be great as well, so. But, you know, kinda, oh, the, the eighth grade trip to Montreal and the overnight. That's always a, it's always a highlight. And once again, that was amazing, the kids. There are some kids that have never been out of their town, let alone Vermont, or the state, or the country. And one student in particular, eyes as big as I've ever seen eyes on a kid. And just, I felt so fortunate to be able to provide that type of opportunity for somebody who otherwise may never get that opportunity. It was, it was really neat. And I did joke with them, we went up the incline tower and, and at the top, it got shook, I was like, huh! And he's like, ah! So, and he, when he, when he tells the story of Montreal, that's the first thing he talks about is how we almost died. But not really. So if you hear about any, oh, near-death experiences, they're not, not really the, the case. But what I was gonna say is, you know, with the new hires, there's absolutely amazing people leaving HCS next year that, that, a hundred, almost a hundred and sixty years of service to Heinsberg, and that's not easily replaced. So just public acknowledgement, then Cheryl Asian, Carol Hensdale, Sally Fugzen, Diane Barber, and Audrey Walsh are all retiring, and I wish them the best.
Is that my cue too?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so on behalf of the board, I also acknowledge all that service and thank them with tremendous gratitude for the service to HCS over numerous decades, in the case of all of them with respect to education in general and even to HCS in particular. So thank you to them.
Any questions?
Forty-six. Ken Germs.
Yep. Good number.
It'll grow, right?
Need a few more. Need a few more.
We need a few more.
Yep. Maybe we could announce that. Have people from surrounding towns come. Yeah, you know, if we, if we had fifty, that would be great.
Pick out some ads.
Yeah.
Alright. Any questions? From you guys?
No.
Alright. Go on to five point two. S U D brief. I think that's you.
That was a long time ago. It's tricky to remember. The S U D brief. We had a, you know, the common core topic that everybody had with Dan French, looking at technology. Let me just go back to my notes. It was kind of an uneventful meeting. I don't really have anything.
Yeah. The part that I was there for, I missed the common topic, but the part that I was there for, we didn't really cover that much.
Yeah.
The biggest, there, there was more discussion about policy than we've ever had before. There were questions about various policies that were, we were looking at because the search and seizure events were on the docket tonight.
And we have that on our agenda, so.
Oh, we do? Yes, we do. So we can talk about it too. Alright. Hi Stacy.
Evening.
So.
Been a while since I've seen you.
What?
It's been a while since I've seen you.
It has been a while. So we skipped the presentation. World Language will be here in a few minutes, so we've just started covering other stuff. Five point three then, third quarter FMR. We got stuff from Bob Mason. We can summarize it.
Yep.
If anyone has any questions. I recall it being overall good.
Yes.
The only question I had was, not recalling specifics, but didn't we talk about trying to spend some money this fiscal year?
Yep.
In order to not have to expend it next fiscal year?
Yes.
Are we gonna be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So a, a couple of things. One is, that's already in the works, and some of the numbers that are being forecasted out include those numbers already. As to not surprise you with the one dollar figure this month and a, and another dollar figure the next month. With that said, Bob and I have noticed that the construction fund is dried up. Hey, welcome. Come on in. We're just gonna finish up one piece and then we'll, we'll start with you. So we, we've noticed that the construction fund is near zero. And one thing that we might be coming to the board with at the retreat is, at the retreat, we'll have an even better sense of where we're gonna finish up and possibly earmarking a piece of money to go toward projects that may be needed in the future. And the. Well, I think I'll stop there. There is, there is a rationale in my head for doing that.
So that, that was, can I ask a?
Yeah, please.
So that was my only question on the FMR, you know, no open projects at this time. And I know it's on our retreat agenda, but prior to then, do we have an idea of the big projects? Like, I know we've talked about the White Building for a number of years, doing something on the interior with that, the field, of course. What are the other big projects out there? And the reason I'm, I'm asking is for conversation related to the merger question. And so, you know, for the other districts within our supervisory union who can well articulate what the, what the capital needs are, you know, Sheldon just passed the nine point two million dollar bond. Williston has a twelve million dollar bond coming up. And Charlotte had an analysis of their facility that can pinpoint two million dollars. And we haven't done that kind of analysis on our building in a few years, but it's not that the work isn't there. So for us in conversation, it would be nice to be able to say that, you know, the building's not in perfect condition. We do know, however, that these types of projects are coming our way. Does that make sense?
I can, yeah, it does. I think, I think the building is in really great shape. We, we had some deferred maintenance on the roof this year as a budget conversation. But that's just typical, I think it was, I don't wanna misquote it, but it was around fifty thousand. It wasn't, it wasn't an extraordinary cost. And the renovations that we did in the three-five wing right after the K-two wing really improved those spaces. And we've just kind of been chipping away, so structurally, the building's in a good place. I think that the gym and the auditorium is always, I mean, if we thought of anything on a large scale in the field, you know, outside of the building, there's, those are, those are the only things that, but in terms of the White Building, the White Building structurally is, is fine. We've done some, it's all new, newly carpeted, newly painted in the last two or three years. The outside of the, the White Building was just painted. So in terms of big.
Beige, as a matter of fact.
What's that?
Beige.
We're not white.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The off-white building, yeah. But I can ask Tim if he, but every time we do that five-year capital improvement plan, nothing big is, is imminent.
And what about that case of kitchen equipment?
New boilers, yep. The kitchen, but again, not an extraordinary cost.
Okay.
And that's one of those things that we're able to purchase with this year's funds.
Okay, good. I know that was something you were worried about.
So Art Room is getting a new floor this year. Kitchen is getting a new floor. So, I mean, Tim is really on top of just making sure that the, the building has what it needs. World Language is moving back into the fifty-two wing. And there was, when they were there last, there was some air duct work that needed to be done, and that's been taken care of.
Okay, alright.
You know, I, I think that we're constantly looking toward efficiency for the school. So windows, you know, again, however we can become more energy efficient is something that I'm completely into, so.
Well, I'll just add this and then we'll move on, but when we look at twenty years of building projects across the supervisory union, what we have for Heinsberg is more frequent capital investments, whereas like a Williston, there might be a project and then fifteen years later, another project. So over time, our debt service is approximately the same when we look at a per capita for the students, you know, the education spending per student. But it just, the perception is that it's different because we have been keeping up with that. But, okay.
Yeah, I think the.
I just wanted to double check to see if there was anything.
The, one thing that I would, that I've told teachers before when they've asked about, well, we're gonna be picking up this from Sheldon and this from Williston, and, you know, that perception is out there with teachers and community. And what I tell them is that our entire K-two wing isn't paid off, and, and that is also, you know, kind of part of the, once we become consolidated, then it becomes everybody's expense.
Everybody, yeah.
And so because we've done the work six years ago on the K-two wing.
We still have that debt service out there.
Correct.
Still.
Yeah.
So the assets liabilities, it's kind of a watch.
So.
But, yeah.
The only other thing I would highlight in the FMR is food service is going above and beyond. I mean, they're, they've really turned it around, and so.
But what's, what's different? What's driving that, do you know?
I think a couple of things are different. One, consistency, so that kids know that Tuesday is taco and pizza's Friday and.
I would concur with that.
And pasta, so that they, they can plan on it, parents can plan on it, kinda like a P E and art, you know, I mean, okay, what day is it? It's Tuesday, okay, it's tacos and, and art. And, I mean, as you're getting your kid ready, you can make those decisions. Participation is about forty-six percent for lunch, and that is second highest in the S U. I had Bob and, Bob run some numbers on that. And, and breakfast is, it's, it's my challenge for next year. Because that's the holding place for the kids before they get released to their classes, and it's just not conducive for, for eating. And I think our participation is, is taking a hit for that. So, so I, only anticipating better numbers next year. So.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news.
Yeah.
Good news. Do you wanna jump to World Language then?
Yeah, if we can.
For the presentation?
Yeah.
So where we left, we left off on five-three, so we'll come back to five-four after the World Language presentation, so.
So I would like to introduce Zelphat Casti, Madame Casti, and Signor Luna, Ina Caluna. And they're here to present on the World Language program. They were informed of the presentation due to somebody's forgetfulness about a week and a half ago, maybe two. And they, they were amazingly gracious about, huh! Oh, yes, we can do that! And so we brainstormed a couple of ideas, and, and they've put together a little video for you, which I was able to preview. And it's, it's awesome. So, but with that being said, I'll, I'll go over to the computer and you guys can say what you need to. So Zelphat and Ina Caluna.
Should we introduce ourselves?
I think they know who we are.
So we decided to put in a video that kind of tells you what's going on inside of the classroom, and it's narrated by students, seven and eighth graders mainly, you know, really like an introduction for each scene. So it's like, you know, we'll get the feedback after. So it has most of the information you probably need to know, and if you have additional questions, you'll be asked as a time after. We also have a flyer about the World Language department that we can pass out, you know, if you give more hand, and then answer some questions.
Is this what we got at budget time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We did, but just in case.
No, no, it's okay.
We had additional people.
Just one more. That's all I need, one more. That's all I need, one more.
Sure.
This is, this is great.
So in the video, we tried to include students in grade one through eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have you watch.
Oh, thank you.
Should we differ a lot?
Uh, yes, I will do my work.
What about the values?
We need a different vision of life. Language is culture.
Let's just make sure I have everything what it needs to be.
That's good right there. Yeah, that's good.
Holding off.
Holding off.
Alright.
Full screen that.
I got the speakers as loud as they can go.
Language is the roadmap of a culture.
Full screen that.
A different language is a different vision of life. Language is culture. It showed me more about lifestyles in other places than the US, which I enjoyed learning about.
I now understand more the culture of other countries and learn about specific places and events.
It helped me obtain new perspectives of culture in different countries.
How come you're here? Hola, mi amo querida. ¿Cómo se va? ¿Está bien, mi amor? ¿Eso es? ¿Está bien, mi amor? ¿Cómo está? Bueno, gracias.
I heard that great things are happening in the language department. Aló, sí, es muy bueno.
Sounds like the first graders are singing one of my favorite greeting songs in Spanish. Let's take a peek. Aló, ¿qué pasa, ver?
It's Eliana.
When los días, cuando los días, por nuestras, por nuestras, la vida es nuestra, la vida es nuestra, y usted, y usted.
Oh, and it sounds like the second graders are greeting each other. They're clapping too. They're engaging in conversation. Let's watch.
¿Qué es el l e s? ¿Qué es un castro? Es o pe o si e. ¿Cómo se va? Está bien, mi amor. Um, sabe cómo se usa. Y por, le, ah, eh, eh, eh. One. Um, yo creo que, blanco, y, eh, eh.
¡Hola, amigos, cómo se va! ¡Hola, amigos, cómo se va! Está bien, mi amor, ¿cómo se va? Está bien, mi amor, ¿cómo se va? ¡Hola, amigos, cómo se va!
It sounds like they're done. Let's ask them why they think learning the language is important and what they like about it.
Um, I like doing the colors and the numbers, the months. What I like about French is when we play pop, but I'm proud of doing the dialogue and getting it mastered.
It's part of talking, communicating with people from foreign countries.
I want to go to France.
It's Dylan, and I like playing pop, and I'm proud of myself.
French is special for me because, you know, my, half of my family is French.
I like French because I think it's a fun thing to learn because it's fun to hang out with your friends, and then if your friends know you, they talk secretly. I like French because I have half of my family that's French too, and some of them can't speak English, so it's fun to talk with them, and it's just fun to learn different languages.
Let's help the teammates with me. We'll probably have a better idea what the weather is like after listening to the third graders having fun with weather in French.
Que tombe, que no se duite. Que tombe, que no se duite. Que tombe, que no se duite. ¡Venga, la, la, la! ¡Venga, tu sitio! ¡Se, mami, tu fe de sole! ¡Se, mami, tu fe de sole! ¡Se, mami, tu fe de sole! ¡Se, que yo, no, mi amor, de la sombra!
Can you remind me how to say head and foot in Spanish?
I hear that the fourth graders are using cool movements and singing cha-cha-cha to remember how to use body parts. Let's see what it's all about, and maybe it'll help me remember.
¡Es increíble! ¡Así, mi chica! Mis manos hacen, mis pies hacen, mi boca hace la, la, la. Mi cuerpo hace cha-cha-cha.
How about the fifth graders? What are they working on?
Did you know that they are traveling around the world and getting their passports down to return when they visit a country? They are also getting to eat in restaurants around the world.
Not every country, only the ones that speak French and speak Spanish.
Good enough, that's at least eighty countries.
That's awesome.
My favorite part about Spanish is the songs, because the songs are educational and fun. And the best part about learning Spanish or a different word language is if you ever meet somebody, you're going to a different country, you will be able to talk their language.
One of my favorite parts of Spanish this year was probably either the songs or the games because both were really fun.
What I like about Spanish here is that we have a lot of the dance moves, and it helps us remember, like, old actual comidas, and it helps us, like, that's this, this shirt, and this is the hat.
My favorite part about Spanish this year is the worksheets because they're educational, but it's also fun to do.
Um, I liked learning how to count up higher than a hundred in Spanish, and I liked the game where he had to go uno, dos, tres, cuatro, hola.
He knows about the sixth grade?
Yeah, they're extremely busy, right?
Every time I walked in to take pictures for the yearbook, I got, I was so lucky and have the best snapshots.
Did you know that the sixth graders were really lucky to have an artist from the planet who's helping them learn Spanish through movement? Let's see what they've come up with.
¡Eh, oh, eh, oh! ¡Oh, my! ¡Eh, oh, eh, oh! ¡Como, eh, oh, como, eh, oh! ¡Como, eh, oh, como, eh, oh!
Totally, we're seventh graders. They produced an amazing video in French that was shown to a family, a French family during kindergarten orientation, right?
¡Queremos pasar, vamos a hacer! ¡Donde, la clase, es la, twice, ordinario! ¡Cafés, tablas, eh, de, la!
¡Pues, sí, la mediate! ¡Donde, la mediate! ¡Il y a, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, tablas, es, once, ordinario!
¡Donde, la cantina, il y a, eh, diez, tablas! ¡Una, una, eh, una, y una, cuisine!
And speaking of school, the Spanish students researched and designed school uniforms for the Spanish-speaking countries.
My aunt, who isn't correct, just asked me the same question. And while we were Skyping, she recorded me and emailed it, me, the recording. I was really surprised to talk to you.
Durante el viernes, yo soy salé a Berlín, en el martes. Yo mange une hamburgue, eh, una coca, eh, y una, eh, blanche.
Did you know that some of the Spanish students interviewed with George Washington and his wife as part of their research project on famous people? Let's share with you what these important people taught HCS classmates.
¿Cuál es tu, tu, tu?
Introducción es el primer presidente de los Estados Unidos.
Y yo soy el primer mujer.
George.
¿Cuándo tú inaugurado como el presidente?
Yo soy inaugurado en mil setecientos cuarenta y dos.
¿Dónde vives?
En el estado de Nueva York.
No, nosotros no vivimos en el estado de Nueva York. ¿Por qué no vives en el estado de Nueva York?
No, porque yo no.
Ah, ¿dónde vives?
Nosotros vivimos en Mount Vernon, Virginia.
¿Cuál es tu, tu, tu? ¿Cómo se llama?
Es el doce de junio. Y mi cumpleaños es el veintidós de febrero.
Ah, el día del presidente.
Sí, sí.
George, ¿cuál es tu segundo nombre?
Yo no tengo una nombre de él.
Martha, ¿cuál es tu número de, de, de?
Es Martha, de él.
George, ¿tú llevas una pelota?
No, yo no llevo una pelota. Mi caballo es el chaval.
Wow. ¿Tú es que eres estratos?
Sí, nosotros tenemos estratos.
Pretty, pretty exciting trip to Montreal. Did you guys hear anything about that?
Yeah, I've been there doing some really cool things. Let's check it out.
Yeah.
En Montreal, um, yo voy a ver un film de IMAX. ¿Eh, va?
En Montreal, tú vais a ver un biodromo, es para pasar.
Ah, ¿vamos? Sí, ¿eh, va?
Um, Montreal, yo voy a ver un estadio de pique. ¿Eh?
Sí.
Um, en Montreal, j'ai mangé un vieux Montreal, eh, j'ai mangé dans les jardins de Paris, en le président.
Did you know that eighty-eight percent of students in eighth grade French class are already signed up for taking French to SCBU? And eighty-eight percent of the Spanish class are recommended to take Spanish to SCBU? Let's see what some of the students responded when they were asked, what motivates you to continue learning and/or pursue the language learning? The culture brought to France at CPU, being bilingual and future travel opportunities, is what one student said. One said, I came this far, I'm going all the way.
Another student responded, because I have already come this far in French and I'm eager to learn more and expand what I know. Another student also put their input in by saying, language can help you understand the world better and be able to communicate with more people. Another student also said, I want to continue learning French because I like the language and learning about something new and new to me.
I feel like learning Spanish in an environment like Heinsberg Community School is very supportive because everyone is helping you learn and just encouraging you to learn a different language. And a language like Spanish is used so many places around the world, it's so helpful to know.
It's so helpful to know a language that is so universally used. Um, I struggled a little bit with the conjugating verbs for a while and I eventually just got a lot of help from my peers and the teachers in the room and it finally just clicked for me and then it all became very easy and it all kind of made sense. And two years ago, I went to Mexico and I used a lot of Spanish that I learned here and it might have been a little complicated to understand them because they talk so fast, but for the most part, it was fairly simple.
French has been very beneficial for me in my personal life because sometimes when I'm thinking in my head, I hear it in French and not English and sometimes when I'm writing essays for school, I start writing them in French.
Uh, so I was new to HCS this year and before I came, I wasn't really that great at memorization, so I had trouble with conjugation. But this year, our French teacher really made us like apply it to like talking about what we did over the weekend or just making up random sentences or something. And that really helped me to like learn the conjugations better.
What we enjoyed the most, learning about culture and creative projects.
The speaking activities were really helpful to learn because they really pushed you to really have the phrasing, vocabulary, and pronunciation correct.
I really enjoyed the projects. They were almost always fun and really enriched our learning.
I'm most proud of my growth in pronunciation. I really tried to pay attention to the sounds and I think I improved a lot.
I enjoyed talking to my friends in target language and practice.
I appreciated the games we played.
I appreciated the opportunity to learn a language.
I got to have fun with the language and share my work with friends.
The language department thanks you for your attention. We hope you enjoyed our program. Merci pour votre attention et à bientôt.
That was very informative.
No, that was, that was good.
There's nothing like breaking the kids' minds.
So the kids did it all. We're proud of them.
Yeah.
In a very short amount of time.
Imagine what it could have been.
So get them to put things together and they did some fantastic jobs. I mean, at least the narrator, we had videos going on, but they stepped up and helped out. They can't wait to see it, so. They're the first people. Very few, yeah. Have any questions?
I have an observation and a question. The observation that, I, I think we've noted this before, but what is of, I think, particular relevance is that not only are you teaching them language, but you're teaching them culture too. I saw a lot of examples in that of teaching them about the cuisine of a place or its history. I saw things about the Aztecs in there. And I think, you know, that's, that's very important for kids in this atmosphere to learn about, uh, in addition to the language skills. The question I have is, uh, the two girls, the two eighth graders at the end, I honestly can't remember who it was.
Asha and Sarah.
It was Asha and Sarah, right? The eighty-eight percent stat. That, so eighty-eight percent go on to study at CBU. Can you remind me? I know all the kids in the younger grades go with their class. The kids in the middle school, do they have to take a language?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, in middle school, they, they are enrolled in a language.
They, they, they choose one or the other, but they, but all kids have to take it.
Yeah.
Correct?
And I'm pretty sure it's every day, right?
Unless they have um...
So there's some students that need additional support um, in literacy and math.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, but it's, it's part of the regular schedule and then as an administrative decision, there's students that are receiving tier-two supports, opposite world language.
Five days a week, right?
Depends on the grade. Sixth graders have three days per week, seventh graders four days per week, and eighth graders, no, seven and eight, five days, five days per week.
And you might not know the answer to this, but what about at CBU? Is, is it required to take a language in order to graduate from CBU?
It is for high school students to take two levels of the same language at high school.
Okay.
So what we do is even the score and the scorecard need to go to the second level, so French or Spanish too. So they go more advanced in one language, but they, so now they decided to go to Latin, so now they're taking a break and so now they switch languages, like after doing French, they do Spanish or the opposite. So they have some freedom, but some of them decided, well, I have been studying that and they are engaged. So they're busy.
Hmm, that's good.
So the eighty-eight percent number that was testing into level two, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so the eighty-eight... Yeah, the eighty-eight percent are continuing in level two at CBU. Um, and if we're gonna stick with the language, there is one student decided to do French one, although I recommended him for French two. It's his personal decision.
Just reinforce.
Yeah, to reinforce um, and another one decided to take Latin. But you know, that is a big number, you know, sticking to the, with the same language. And you know, they kind of really see the value of, you know, going up. Um, and they met one of the French teachers at CBU. I invited one of them um, as a guest speaker and she spoke in the target language, you know, and she was really impressed uh, with the level of communication and understanding and you know, she was there to kind of answer any related CBU questions and they were like feeling so attached to, to what they'd been doing. They kind of really gave up their recess time because that was the only time she could make it. So that was so impressive, you know, with the attitude and the willingness to show up and you know, interact with someone that you didn't know and it went really well. Uh, something similar happened to a Spanish student. It was one student, she was in eighth grade when I arrived for the first time four years ago and she just came back from the, came back from República Dominicana, which is a trip that they do every two years here at CBU, the Spanish department. So she just came back and they always come back to their schools and shared and she presented to seven and eight of all in Spanish and it was good for the students to see the options that they can, they continue investing in a language.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So the, the grades six, seven, eight, grade six, um, they experience both languages and then seven, eight, oh, when do they make the decision?
At the end of the fifth grade.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they would then that first and second choice down and you know, this is, and they stick to it for three years.
Oh, so once they choose, they don't switch?
No, we don't, we didn't have any of this happening. I mean, in rare, rare situations, but you know, they really, you know, commit to it and even though they didn't sign up, they forgot and we placed them, there wasn't any complaints. They, sometimes they say, you know, we love both, just choose for us. And we had, you know, a bunch of them in that situation, which is a great, you know, um, sign as well, that they enjoy being in both languages.
It must be hard for them to choose, yeah.
Yeah. And we, we always tell them, you know, we have a full class and then if you, you know, it's not the end of the, you know, world, you can always switch to it at CBU and they are perfectly fine. And once they learn one language, it's so easy to catch up on the other one at, you know, down the road.
Yeah.
I liked the comments on the conjugating verbs.
Yeah, it's...
I think we can all relate to that a little.
Yeah, it's a nightmare and we're trying to kind of, um, you know, stay away from that drilling type of thing and make them, like, it's making sense in a different way, not just that structure like math because it's, in the past, grammar was kind of compared to math and some kids, they don't like that type of thing. They wanna make it useful, express themselves, so we're trying to, you know.
Always a, a nice comment to hang on to, the young man's comment about the support from peers and how welcome that was.
Yeah.
That says a lot about the school, I think.
Both of you, yeah.
And teachers.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, that was nice.
Thank you, put the video together for me.
Very nice.
Anytime, all right, well, there's a presentation. Yeah, we have to talk, yeah.
Probably the most creative presentation I've seen on the board and I loved your involvement with the kids, it was great.
Thank you, and their positive attitude. Everyone wanted to do the narration, but at the time to find, you know, when I'm not teaching it, getting them to do it, that was a challenge, but it was great. I have to say kudos to the Heinzberg Community School, who, I don't know if you purchased that program, which is with Ideo and it's really simple, well, not really easy, but has some sense, so it wasn't like other programs that are so difficult. So it's good that they have a feature she gave us in service, she gave us that, uh, she presented the software and it's, it's a tool that we have in the school and some students are already using it and it's not, it's like we play I video, iMovie and the iPad on the computer, which was needed for Chromebooks. So it is, it is good to have those options in the school.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Yeah, this is where you run for the hills.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Unless you wanna stay.
So...
I wish I just heard Keith say I could go.
You too, thank you.
We covered five-three, uh, so we'll go back to five point four, Act Forty-Six report. Colleen, you wanna cover this one?
Uh, sure, so um, a couple things.
Is that, is the one pager that was in the SU package in this package?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
Yes. So um, the Act Forty-Six, uh, where are we now? I'll just go off the top of my head. So June seventh, there's a vote. Polls are open, seven AM to seven PM. Um, the night before, there's a hearing in each of the communities and that starts at seven o'clock and that's gonna be in the Heinzberg school. Um, I'm not sure how many people will show up, but uh, you know, hopefully, we'll be having conversations in the community prior to then. Uh, there's a flyer that's gonna be an insert in the Heinzberg record and people are also gonna be getting postcards, um, you know, just a reminder to come out and vote. But I think that we have a lot of work to do over the next few weeks with conversations. I think people are finally realizing that a vote is imminent and now the questions are starting. So, you know, I suggest that, you know, where you send people when they want some information, um, I'll make sure that you all have a copy of this PDF that we just put out. This is a flyer that's gonna go to the, um, as an insert and if someone asks you a question about it, you'll just be able to email this PDF that was suggested earlier at the SU meeting um, so that everyone has quick access to it. Stacy, you didn't get it.
No.
Um...
Thanks.
So as far as like, you know, where to send people, where I'm, what I'm saying is go to the cssu.org site and then click on links for Act Forty-Six. It's probably the easiest way than to give them a completely separate address and it's also a reminder of what CSSU office is about. So there's, it's, go to the site, click on Act Forty-Six and then I would recommend that people do one of two things. One is just review the PowerPoint and we'll make sure that that's more obvious from the site and then also the full report. Start there and then go out. So there, just reminder that, um, the deadlines, if we meet our June, July first deadline in the state that maximizes the state benefits, um, starting twenty seventeen, July one twenty seventeen, that fiscal year, there would be a ten cent tax credit, it'd also make us eligible for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transition grant that helps pay for consultants and so forth. If St. George votes no, they're in advisory. Um, they have until the end of November to vote yes, um, to be able to join a unified district.
If anybody votes no, it doesn't pass.
If any town, right, everything's gonna be counted individually by town.
One thing that, if the communication is, is at that critical stage where you're, you've done a lot of work, I guess it'd almost be a question to Mike, at times, we've revamped the Heinzberg webpage if there's something prominent, so that when they click on cssu.org, there's not a lot of buttons to click, but it's, it's right there.
Yeah.
Kind of hitting you in the face, the PowerPoint and uh...
Can we, can we put an Act Forty-Six link on the HCS website?
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, we can, we can do anything for HCS. I'm thinking even CSSU.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't know, I mean, that might be something that hasn't, um, that Elaine might not have thought about yet, but I mean, it's definitely possible so that you go on.
Right, if you wanna put stuff on the CSSU homepage, we can easily do that. You just send whatever you want to me.
Well, you're suggesting like on the CSSU homepage, put a banner. No, like right, yeah, right in front, so instead of the pictures and instead of the vision, it's, it's right there. I agree with that. I mean, because it's a three-week window.
For each of the schools and SU?
Yeah, I'm not, I think Communication Committee, if there is one, could decide that, but I, it's just a thought because if it, if it's a three-week window before the vote and people go to cssu.org, even if they're not...
I wanna make it easy for them to find it.
Yeah, even if they're not going there for the Act Forty-Six, it might just, uh...
Okay.
And should this, can this, should this go in the Viking and, uh, which one maybe?
You can do whatever you want. I, we just had a, I found out Friday at four o'clock that the deadline to get this done was, um, you know...
Friday, five o'clock?
Monday, so I said, can I have until Tuesday morning?
When is the next Viking? Is there one before that?
Yeah.
So this can go in it?
That's a board, if, if you guys would like it in, I can put it in.
Yeah, so all the information on this is distilled from what's on the Act Forty-Six website. So it's not meant to replace what's on the website. It's just distilled information, but it's still good, it's still useful to get in front of people in order to start sharing the information.
A lot of people may not even go to the website or go look and if you just clap them with this.
So I think it's a good idea to put that in the Viking and I don't have it in PDF yet, but if I get it, I will put it in my next front porch forum posting.
I sent it to you this afternoon. So this, um...
It hasn't showed up yet, that's why I'm telling you that.
So if you will put the vote and sign in front of the school too?
I'll send it out to everybody. So, um, yeah, you know, distribute widely, I, you know, distribute widely. But that's why we, I, you know, we have the little card as well because sometimes it's just easy to put something in someone's hand. That's gonna, so both of these are gonna show up in every mailbox, one through as an insert in the newspaper and one a standalone card and that's a mock-up deck card, it's not the final product.
Do we know how things get on the Heinzberg town website? I just wonder what's on, I haven't looked what's on there, but...
Uh, well, this is a school district.
It's gonna vote, we're gonna vote or something.
Miss might have done something. I know she was writing something for the next issue, the Heinzberg Record and...
They put a sandwich board out front of the town clerk's office.
Yeah, I can check with Missy to see if, um, I think she, I did put a, uh, I did give her the link to the full report and the website, so I think she was, she was doing something with that. But, um, yeah, any, any place that we can have it show up. I just wanna also mention that WCAX had a news report this morning or last night about some other towns having a merger vote someplace and the day of the vote, they had their forum, um, you know, a couple days before and CAEX reported that, um, someone in the community was concerned that the hearing was too close to...
The influence piece?
To the, to the vote. Um, CAEX reported that. We checked with our, you know, two attorneys, one who's with the state and knows everything and Paul Gillies, I think, and Chris Leopold. And they said, we're fine.
Okay.
So if it comes up, we're fine.
We always, we always have the information meeting the night before the vote, for the budget.
Whoever, somebody misinterpreted it and it was repeated as, as fact.
So, uh, for the signage, how would you like it to read? Should it say merger, merger vote so that...
School consolidation vote.
You want a school consolidation vote? Because I don't know if people are gonna know Act Forty-Six.
Maybe take a peek at what the town put out.
School governance merger vote, school governance merger vote. They wanna break up between school and merger because some people are interested that as...
Oh, and after merger of the school.
Oh, because it's very...
So what would you like, so for the sign up in front of HCS?
The sandwich board in front of the town clerks is pretty effective. It's short.
So...
Is there a vote up there?
It says absentee.
Forty-six ballots available here.
Uh, right.
Oh.
It's pretty like...
I would just say Act Forty-Six vote and the date, just do that. People, it'll, people are gonna be a little bit aware, that's what...
People, it'll, people are going to be a little bit aware, that's what I would do. It's easy, you haven't got a million letters, they'll be able to read as they go by.
It's just two words.
It's in your office.
Yeah.
Please vote, June blah, Act forty-six. I don't know.
I'll, I'll send you everything, I'm not going to do it right now, but I'll send you everything.
Good, so for the sign?
Please vote, Act forty-six.
School governance merger vote, school governance.
How, how, what's our character limit?
His sign is pretty small.
It doesn't matter, I, I can put anything you want up there.
You could just call it merger vote.
Yeah, it's up to you, it's up to you guys.
Some people in our committee were very particular about.
Act forty-six merger vote?
Whatever.
Perfect, perfect.
That works.
Please vote, Act forty-six, June eighth.
Vote, June seventh.
Whatever, the right date.
Yeah, the less words, the better.
I just think it's simple. It's consistent with what the, it's consistent with what they have for the town clerk.
Well, that's a good point.
It's not confusing.
That's a good point.
All right, so I have please vote, Act forty-six, June.
No, no, don't say please vote.
Yeah, we want them to vote, don't we?
Come on.
Or just vote then, vote.
Just vote.
Oh my God, he's going to lose it.
No, it's just, too many cooks in the kitchen. You, you decide, that's good, Jeff, you decided.
Vote, June seventh.
Whatever you want to put, Jeff.
No pressure, who do you, who do you like the best?
Right now, you do whatever you want to do.
What is the question?
He wants to know what to put on the board out in front of the school.
To put on the board in front of the school?
Yeah.
June seven, Act forty-six vote.
Perfect.
No, please, we're, we're not going to be nice.
It's another word, it's seven, mother.
Act forty-six vote or Act forty-six vote?
You got to put June sixth, Act forty-six hearing.
All right.
Yes, yeah, you got, you got to put both there. The idea is we have a hearing on June sixth and then voting is on June seventh.
That's a good point.
Because we want people to know about the hearing.
I'm going to, I'm going to say it right now, this is what you want to do. Act forty-six hearing, June sixth, Act forty-six vote, June seventh, that's it.
Six o'clock, seven o'clock, do you want the time?
No.
If he has space, yeah.
I was again.
Got that, Mike?
I got it.
Good luck, Jeff. There's no wrong answer, because you've done the task.
Spend ten minutes on it, sign.
So I think, you know, as far as discussion with the community, Keith had a very good summary that was probably the most concise response. Why do it, flexibility? Do you want to elaborate on that, Keith, or?
Yeah, someone at the S U meeting asked sort of, what's the elevator speech for why we're doing this? The one second elevator speech is flexibility, to allow our schools to do all kinds of things that they can't do now, which will allow them to provide better educational opportunities for kids and allow them to save some money, hopefully, by using resources more efficiently. The little bit longer elevator pitch that I'm using is, we're doing this for two reasons. One is educational opportunities and one is tax savings. The educational opportunities, Elaine helped create a document, which I think is going to be circulated to all the board members, so you can have the, actually, there's two documents, so you can read through that. And the tax incentives, I think people know about that, but, you know, it's, it's going to save everybody some money. And in Heinsberg, in, in Heinsberg in particular, it's going to save us money two ways. First, our per pupil cost is going to go down because of the economies of scale of combining the four towns. Secondly, we are going to benefit if we vote right, to approve it right now, we're going to benefit from the tax incentives the state is making available.
And if we don't vote it?
And if we don't vote it, our, our taxes could go up because a whole bunch of other schools have consolidated and everyone else is going to have to help pay for their tax incentives, which they've cashed in on.
Sounds good.
As, as Dave Connery said, you know, there's a bunch of glaring positives and no glaring negatives. All right. Five, five, parent council debrief, is that you?
It's me. I left sick that night.
Yes, you did.
Oh, it was not fun. I don't know that I have a significant debrief for the half that I was there. Was there anything that happened after I left?
No, I.
We talked about the T-shirts. Whatever happened with that, that's where I walked out.
Uh, that we're not using it as a fundraiser, but we'll sell them at cost.
School spirit, and they figured out a way to order some sort of quantity now?
There, it's in process.
Yeah. So there was a sixth grader, that one? Yeah, the sixth grader designed the shirt and an artist interpreted his design and made a T-shirt out of his picture, and it's actually pretty cool. And so that's what's going to be on the T-shirt.
Yeah, and just trying to figure out a way to, to sell that cost, because it's more about creating community than it is about making money and, so, that's in process. But, uh, no, I think the, the parent group is in a really good place. Talked about the grants and this past session, no teacher applied for a grant, so that also kind of is an indication that teachers have what they need in order to be successful and, so feeling pretty good about that.
Yeah, we, we knew that last time, that's why I didn't bring that up, but it's, yeah, it's good. And we did the parent, the, sorry, the teacher appreciation week, which was good. Frozen fundraiser, made like three thousand dollars or something, so Pi's got some, got some dough for next fall for grants.
Well, I want to thank Pi for organizing the meet and greet for the co-principal and the, the nice treats they provided, so kudos to them for that.
All right, moving on. Facilities committee, nothing, we're going to talk a bit, facilities a little bit at the retreat?
Yeah.
Okay, any other committees? All right, I guess we're on to discussion matters, a whole bunch of policies.
That was some light reading.
Yeah, it's important, uh, stuff.
Well, the policy committee obviously picks up the laboring oar on that most intensely. And there was good discussion, as I mentioned, there was good discussion at the S U meeting about some of the search and seizure policies. So they are important, but they are also being attended to.
I think the concern was just clarifying what happens.
Yeah.
Cindy does such a great job summarizing. And I'm on the policy committee, so if anyone has questions, I would entertain questions, but I don't want to necessarily repeat what Cindy went through.
And I think, uh, information that might be good for the board and the public to know is that, this idea of consolidation or, or having supports and resources to access, anytime the building level administrators have any sort of suspicion of wrongdoing, the first call we make is to Cindy.
Yeah.
And then she can advise us to the, the school lawyers and, but the, the amount of support that we have, we all, and that's just another, um, indication that we're bigger than just H C S, and that's, it's a great thing. So as well as I know the policy.
Yeah.
I, I always ask for clarification before.
And then she'll always, you know, go to legal counsel immediately. So, you know, just a reminder of our process, we do a cyclical review of policies throughout B S U and they go to the, the ones that are up, go to the policy committee. The policy committee goes through, you know, what's happening nationally or state, or is there a new V S B A model to look at? And so we'll just see if there's anything that glaringly needs updating. And some of it is just, the state might require updating on language, and so sometimes it's very simple. And so we hash it out there, comes back to the board. If there are any comments from the boards, then policies go back to the committee. And then once they come out of the committee and the board is comfortable with them, then they'll be up for adoption. So it's a multi-meeting process for any new policies. So the, Mike, you're probably more familiar with the, the tech one. I think, you know, you were there for that last meeting and part of it is just updating, you know, what's a device? Who owns what? That's the issue that we're probably dealing with most now, when you just bring your own device. Kid brings their own device to school, what's the school responsibility for that? Kid gets a device from the school, what's the school's responsibility when they go home? Those are the questions that we have now.
Yeah, yeah. I think the bring your own device is the, is the big, sort of the big question, how it's used in school, and what if it's used in school inappropriately?
Where are the boundaries of who, who's responsible for what? Okay?
All right, thank you. Any thoughts, questions?
That's kind of good.
Yeah.
I read it.
I think it's.
The summary was like, okay, I'm good.
There's that, there's this, there's the who owns the device, but then oftentimes, when there's an infraction, it goes beyond just not using the device appropriately in school, but it could be bullying and harassment, so it usually falls under a different policy in which we can then access. So, because phones aren't the property of any school person, you know, so if, if there's reasonable suspicion that somebody's been bullied or harassed on the phone.
And, yeah, and just a reminder, the protocol is only, you know, it asks a student to show something. It doesn't mean that there's just open searching of everything, you know, it's limited to particular areas. That's it.
All right, thank you. Six, two, communications. As you guys have noted, I've been sending out Front Porch forum posts on the consolidation. Not on, you know, because that's the topic du jour, there's nothing really to talk about at H C S right now. The Communications Committee for the Act forty-six committee has drafted that one that I sent out yesterday. And they've also drafted blurbs on finances, educational benefits, and specific governance language. So I will send that out over the next couple of weeks before the vote periodically. I'm looking at my calendar, I might, I might do it on Wednesday or Thursdays. And obviously, I will start mentioning the June sixth meeting to encourage people to come, but.
And the idea is to have those posts in your hand ahead of time so that you can, if you need to craft something specific to Heinsberg, you have the, you know you can do that.
Yeah, oh, oh, I know I can edit.
Thank you, you do that very well.
You can't, you can't give a lawyer any document and not expect some editing.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay, now, all right, so if you're okay with that, I will continue doing those things. Action Matters, we have none, so Consent Agenda, a bunch of things there. I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Thank you, Bill, do I have a second? Thank you, Shayla, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Talk about next meeting dates, our next board meeting is May twenty-sixth for our annual retreat. We are meeting in the morning, eight to one, at the Sunset Ballroom. The S U board, which non-S U board members are of course welcome to stay. I believe we're watching a really cool movie. What's it called? I can't remember what it's called.
Me on the spot.
But it was, it was a movie that was shown to the, I think, to all the faculty in the S U and apparently is really, really good.
The state, I think.
Yeah.
It's about the future of education.
The right to succeed, there's, uh.
And then there's a June twenty-one business meeting, this is always on the calendar. I'm not exactly sure what we're going to do, but at least keep it as a place saver.
Did you say eight to one?
Eight to one, yes. I did not hear the need for an executive session.
Can I, can I have one just for two minutes?
Yes.
And I forgot to mention that in the beginning.
Well, fortunately, it's on the agenda, so, there you have it. All right, well then, fine, I will not entertain a motion to adjourn. Rather, I will entertain a motion for executive session. Are you going to make the motion? Thank you, Stacy.
I'll do whatever you need to do.
I'm assuming there's a second if we need one, so we're going to do that. Uh, what are we going to talk about, personnel?
Uh, no.
What are we going to talk about so that we can justify executive session?
Contract, personnel.
No, uh, legislative guidance.
Is it what we talked about earlier?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to give everybody a heads up on.
I think it's a good idea.
So how would you categorize it?
Impact of legislative guidance in the school?
I can bring it up and.
I don't know if it warrants the executive session, because I don't know these things.
Yes.
Department of Education's.
Yes.
I think that's a being up in form.
I, I, I'm clueless, but executive session is reserved for personnel or contract issues.
Or real estate issues that we need to keep secret, because there's an option or something like that.
So if it's, if it's something, and, and I have no idea, but if it's something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is either, so I can't.
Okay, well, we don't have to go into executive session.
Well, we could start the conversation if they feel like they want to stop it, we can stop it and move to executive session.
Or we don't even have to bring it up.
We don't.
Okay, all right, then, you know what happens.
Yeah.
I will take that motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, we're done.
Great.
Fifteen. Thank you.